I'd like to call to order the city council meeting of Monday, May 7th, 2018. And we have a prayer by Pastor Hank Rosso.
Thank you, Mayor. If you'd join me, please.
There. Join me in prayer, if you would, please. Our God in heaven, we are so thankful for this meeting tonight. Lord, we take so much for granted in our lives. These men and women who serve, sometimes sacrificially, giving up precious time with family and loved ones, and hours after hours that are unnoticed and unseen, and we thank you, God, for them and what they do for our community. Lord, we thank you that in a room like this, even though there are some things we don't agree on, we do agree on the main things, God, that we share an affection for Watertown and our support for this city and the surrounding area. We have a deep care for what goes on in this place. We thank you for that. We thank you for the opportunity here to come together and be united and have discussion. And we pray during this time you'd give us wisdom and understanding, help each one to consider others as more important than themselves, and that they would empty themselves, as you did, Lord, as an example to us. God, we thank you for the services that are represented here tonight. Some things are pretty important. We take that, too, for granted. We thank you for law enforcement and how they are out there in the darkest nights, keeping us safe, watching over us. We thank you, Lord, for the police and fire, the fire department, Lord, and the paramedics, God, that we know who we can call and we can count on them when we need help. I pray that you keep your hand on each one of those who serve and that you would keep your hand on their families, encourage them this morning or this evening, that you would help them to know how much they're appreciated. We thank you again for this city and all the other services we enjoy, the utilities and the street work and the maintenance and all those things of our beautiful parks. And in Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Roll call, please.
Albertson.
Here.
Bueller.
Here.
Danforth.
Here.
Lalum.
Absent.
Manti.
Absent.
Roby.
Here.
Solem.
Here.
Thorson.
Here.
Vilhauer.
Here.
Y.
Present.
Thank you.
The first item on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda, and I have one addition to item A, which is approval of the minutes. We have the approval of the minutes of the city council meetings held on April 16th and May 2nd, and I would like to add the minutes of April 13th. And there is a set at everybody's place along with the press, so they all got copies of that. So that's the only change I would make. Is there a motion and second for approval? Moved by Councilman Danforth, second by Councilman Bueller. Any discussion?
Mayor. I debated if I should show up or not tonight, but I'm gonna have to recuse myself from items one and four through 14.
Thank you, Councilman Roby. All right, we have a motion and second for approval of the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number two is public comment, and that's a time reserved for anyone who would like to make a public comment to step forward and do so. Please state your name into the microphone for the record before making your comment. And if your comment is related to an agenda item, please wait until that agenda item is taken up by the council. Is there anyone here who cares to speak? Seeing none, we will move on. Item number three is approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion and second?
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Vilhauer, second by Councilman Y. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number four is malt beverage on-off sale license renewal for SNL Entertainment LLC doing business as Sparkies Bar at 19 North Broadway for the period of July 1st, 2018, to June 30th, 2019. And I will open the public hearing and ask Kristin if she wants to say something first.
Thank you, Mayor. I know the agenda looks like it has a lot of items on it that deal with alcohol, malt beverage, and it does. Just before we kinda get started with them, I do wanna let the council know that items four and five are on the agenda for violations, which is, at that time, if there's a violation before the renewal, then they need to come forward during the public hearing. So that's four and five. Six and seven are due to the state of South Dakota changed four licenses and basically rolled them into this one. So the Redland Art Center and Discount Liquors had one of those three that are now the on-off sale malt beverage. So that's why they're on there. And if you look, you'll see that they're effective July 1st. So the current license they have is still good until that renewal starts in July 1st. And then Oscars, item number eight, that was actually approved prior to meetings, I think. There was just an issue with the name of the company in regards to the paperwork and then an address error on one of the forms, so that's why you see that one back. And then number 10, you've also seen that one prior. Roadhouse 81 had the opportunity to purchase a malt beverage with Video Lottery. So that's why you've already approved their malt beverage, but now they want to add the Video Lottery. And then we jump down to the Slow Pitch, which will come after the lease. So at this time, I'll let the public hearing happen.
Okay, the first one is for Sparkies. Is there anyone here that would like, please, come forward and state your name into the microphone for the record, please?
Jeremy Seaman. You guys just wanna... Okay. Can I sit down?
Yeah, sure. Have a seat.
I was, the night of March 3rd, I was out of the country and our manager was laid up with a pretty badly sprained ankle. So we had two other bartenders working that night, and it just so happened to be the night of the city pool tournament. And we had the championship match at the bar, and it went late, which is allowed, but an officer walked in and one of our bartenders was pouring a drink, and so he was issued a citation and later a fine. And we served a three-day suspension in the beginning of April issued by the state. It's my impression it wasn't intentional. It was just kind of a perfect storm of the pool match going late, and they just didn't turn around and look at the clock in the bar and realize what time it was. Since then, we've obviously had multiple discussions with all of our bartenders, you know. Usually Jeff or I are there, and typically on a night like that, on a weekend night, the bar is pretty cleared out by, you know, 1:32 o'clock, so they don't really have to worry about that kinda stuff. But it happened and, you know, we were shut down for three days, and that's kinda the gist of it.
All right.
If you have any questions for me.
I do.
Councilman Bueller?
What time was that, Jeremy, when?
I believe the officer walked in about 2:15 is what I think. I'm not 100% sure, but it was after 2:00.
Okay, thanks.
And the violation was for serving after 2:00?
Correct, yep.
Councilman Y. Did you have a question?
Jeremy, is your entire staff TAM certified or just certain individuals?
Just one right now. But that's another thing. Him and I have discussed that we're gonna pay for any of our employees to do the TAM certification, so.
Any other questions or comments? All right, I will look for a motion and second for approval.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Danforth and second by Councilman Albertson. Any further discussion? So I should close the public hearing before we take action. All right, seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Item number five is malt beverage on-off sale license renewal for BMG, Inc. doing business as Ringo's at 520 10th Street Northwest for the period of July 1st, 2018, to June 30th, 2019. I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak about this? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. I believe this was an underage violation. Is that true?
This was also an after-hours violation. And I do want to make note that a letter was sent to both parties, letting them know that they were required to be here so that you were able to ask them any questions. And I don't see him.
Okay, I'll look for a motion and second, then we'll have discussion.
Okay, I'll make the motion, please.
Motion by Councilman Danforth, second by Councilman Bueller. Discussion.
What if this gets voted down right now? Do they, what happens to their operation?
I might look to Matt for help, but I think I'll try. This is actually for the renewal. So at this point, if it is voted down, they will not, the license for the period of the July 1st, 2018, to June 30th, 2019, would not be approved. So their current license would stay in place, but the renewal would not. And that's all kinda regulated with the state. There could be the possibility of still meeting the deadline. It just, this is the normal renewal period.
So if this gets voted down, are they notified that their application for renewal is denied? And so they know that then they're gonna have to come back at some point, correct?
Reapply, yeah.
And didn't we put this in as a requirement as the council for anybody? So it's not like a, that they could kinda wanna come here if they want to. You know, I appreciate Jeremy being here and going through what he did. So we did put this down as a requirement, correct? Okay, thank you.
Kristin, when can they come back?
I would say they still have time to probably make, what is it? Is it July 1st? They would still have time to make it. I can't say a specific because when you have to do the renewal and the hearing, we have to do the notices and we have all those. So it would be, after this, if it is not approved, we would have to notify them. And then as soon as they come back with their application, we'd start the process.
You know, is it possible they're not here maybe because they don't know that we started these meetings earlier? That's, I'm gonna suggest that maybe we move this further out in the agenda to give them an opportunity, maybe, to come. If they, if, put it later on in the agenda. What do you guys think?
The letter does say 5:30, but that's...
Another... We've done this at 7:00 for ever, you know, so.
Another option would be to, somebody could move to postpone to a certain date, probably the next council meeting, and that way we could give them another opportunity to show up at that time. And then if at that time, you know, they don't show up, then we can take the next step. That's just an option.
There's a motion on the table, so we vote that.
No, the motion would, the motion to be, the motion to postpone would...
I would then suggest we move this to later in the agenda, give an opportunity, maybe they'll show up. Later in the agenda, when it comes up, if they're not here, then we can take that action. That's my suggestion.
So is that a motion?
Yeah, I'll make that a motion.
We have a motion by Bueller and a second by Y to postpone? Move? Oh, move it to the...
Later in the agenda.
Later in the agenda.
Move it till later in the agenda. We'll revisit it. If they're not here at that time, then we could make that motion to postpone it.
Remind me. Okay. We have a motion to move to later in the agenda and second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. We have one nay. Do we need roll call vote?
Sorry. Okay. Albertson.
Yes.
Bueller.
Yes.
Danforth.
Yes.
Lalum is absent. Manti absent. Roby is recused. And Solem.
Yes.
And Thorson.
Yes.
Vilhauer.
No.
And Y.
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, thank you. Item number six is application for a new retail on-off sale malt beverage license to Redland Art Center doing business as Redland Art Center at 1233rd Street Southeast, effective July 1st, 2018. And I will go ahead and open the public hearing and see if anyone is here to speak on this. Please have a seat and state your name for the record.
Good evening. Julie Random with the Redland Art Center. And this is a new license because of what Kristin explained. It's a change in the state law, but we have actually had a South Dakota farm wine license since May of 2009. So we're just asking to be able to continue selling the Terry Redlin wine.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there questions? All right, anyone else here to speak on this? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and look for council motion and second. Moved by Councilman Solem, second by Councilman Y. Any discussion? Councilman...
Mayor, I've got a question, just in general, on some of these that we're gonna be acting on in the next few minutes. The malt beverage that we're approving is both on and off sale. So I'm looking at Oscar's Nails, for example. I mean, that would actually allow them to stock an inventory and sell off-sale if they so choose? Is what we're granting? I mean, I know that wouldn't be that intent, I'm guessing, but that is what the license would allow?
Technically, yes.
How was that different from Target, for example, that came before us, oh, six, eight months ago, and we rejected their application?
From, well, I guess I wasn't around at that time, but Target right now has no alcohol license, correct? Right, so that's what's different, I guess. So Oscars, we've already granted a license to...
Can I ask a question, piggyback on Glenn's, if I can?
Sure, Councilman Danforth.
Is the on-sale, off-sale, the type of license that they have there, is that defined by the state as far as the type of? So if we wanted to have, in this case of Oscars, and I think, Glenn, that's where you're coming from, is the intent, their intent, at least initially, is on-sale for the use. And it would be nice, actually, to be able to prohibit the off-sale at times, to control that maybe a little better. Do we have that ability to do that?
That is actually, the three licenses kind of were all that rolled in to this new one. The three licenses that the state repealed, there was an on-off sale malt beverage, on-off sale farm wine license that was repealed. Cotticton County Historical Society was the only one that we had, and they did not reapply for the on-off sale malt beverage. The other one was an off-sale malt beverage license. Discount Liquors had that license, and they are now applying for the on-off sale malt beverage. And then the other one that was repealed was the off-sale malt beverage and off-sale South Dakota farm wine. So the state is really the one who controls what the licenses allow for.
And I guess, Glenn, I guess I wasn't really tracking your question because if you, if Target, for example, was a bar right now and they had a license to sell on-sale, now they would have the ability to sell off-sale as well, but they have zero licenses right now, so I guess that's why I wasn't really tracking.
Well, and I should maybe use that comparison, Matt, but just in general, to me, it sounds like it's out of our hands, but it seemed like that that's really opening up for potential within the community when you could have both on and off sale for a particular location.
Correct, so Discount Liquors, for example, will now have the ability, if they so choose, to have a little bar in there if they really wanted to. But then the question, I guess, is, do we, you know, do we care or do we not? I mean, there's already alcohol being sold there. It's already zoned for alcohol. That's, I guess that's the question, but I can see that where it could become an issue, certainly.
Any other questions or comments? And we've said a lot of different businesses. This is the Redlin Center that we're acting on. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number seven is application for a new retail on-off sale malt beverage license to Discount Liquors, Inc. doing business as Discount Liquors at 125 9th Avenue Southeast, effective July 1st, 2018. Is there anyone in the room that would like to speak? I'm gonna open the public hearing, and now's your chance. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and look for motion and second.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Albertson. Second by Councilman Vilhauer. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number eight is application for a new retail on-off sale malt beverage and new retail on-off sale wine license to Oscar Nails Watertown LLC doing business as Oscar Nails Watertown LLC at 2013 Willow Creek Drive, Suite Number 3. I will open the public hearing and ask if anyone would like to speak about this. Would like to say something, please come to the microphone. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and look for a motion and second. Moved by Councilman Bueller, second by Councilman Danforth. Any discussion or questions?
So, sorry, we already approved this?
No.
Or this is new?
This is Oscar Nails. There's just a whole bunch of these.
This was a name change.
Yeah, and this one was the one that has been approved, but when it was turned in, the paperwork had, some of the company's information was incorrect. So that's what this one is for.
Kristin mentioned that as we were going through. Error in the paperwork. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number nine is renewal of a retail on-off sale malt beverage license to Oscar Nails Watertown LLC doing business as Oscar Nails Watertown LLC at 2013 Willow Creek Drive, Suite Number 3. And this is related to the one we just did. No public hearing?
There's no public hearing needed on this one. This is because they had the new, and it's that time for the malt beverage renewal. That's why you're just gonna see a couple of these have a renewal right after they're approved.
Okay, so I'll look for a motion and second for approval. Moved by Councilman Solem, second by Councilman Thorson. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number 10 is application for a transfer of ownership of a retail on-off sale malt beverage license and Video Lottery license from Jalen LLC doing business as Burritos on Broadway at 12 North Broadway to AMPT LLC doing business as Roadhouse 81 at 621 5th Street Southeast. And Kristin, you said this one's because they're adding the Video Lottery.
Yes, this is, Roadhouse 81 has already had the approval of a malt beverage as well as a wine. Then they had the opportunity to buy a malt beverage that was tied in with Video Lottery, so at that time, they wanted to do that, so this is what this one will be for.
Okay, I will go ahead and open the public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak about this? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask for council motion and second. Moved by Councilman Vilhauer, second by Councilman Thorson. Any discussion? Councilman Y.
So Kristin, do they have two licenses, then, if this is approved, or does it combine?
So currently, they will. What we did is you'll see right after this, the renewal will follow for the one with Video Lottery, and then we will just not turn in their original malt beverage. It was on the list in case this was not approved, but at this time, no, they will just have the malt beverage with Video Lottery.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Excuse me. Item number 11 is renewal of a retail... You wanna take this, Bruce?
Number 11 is the renewal of retail on-off sale malt beverage license and Video Lottery license to AMPT LLC doing business as Roadhouse 81 at 6215, whoops. Yeah. 621, thank you, thank you. It kinda disappeared on me. There it is. See, just you let me do it once there, Mayor. Anyway, there is not a public hearing. Okay, any discussion?
Kristin, would you, do you have anything to add to this before we...
No, just the renewal. It would have been at the top if it weren't to have been the new license, so this is the normal renewal for the period of July through June of this year, so.
Okay, I think I got it, Bruce.
Okay.
I'll look for a motion. Moved by Councilman Thorson, second by Councilman Albertson. Discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number 12 is authorization for the mayor to sign a lease agreement with Lake City Slow Pitch Softball Association for concessions, malt beverage sales for Premier Softball Complex. I'll look for motion and second for approval. Moved by Councilman Vilhauer, second by Councilman Bueller. And it looks like we have Terry here to tell us about this.
I do the good straw on this one. Really, I might turn it over to Matt. Jay, myself, and Matt have worked on this for a couple of weeks and were comfortable with where the lease is. This does come with a recommendation from approval or for approval from the Parking Rec Board at the April Board Meeting, so. But I'm here to answer questions. One point I'll make, just because of Councilman Vilhauer's last question, if you have a copy of this lease in your packet, if, notice Section 5C, just for the fact that we did put in this because we're a city facility, that no malt beverage will be sold for consumption off the licensed premises. So we did have a tool, because we own the actual property, to eliminate off-sale. So this is one example that, you know, we can't do it for private property, but since it is on a city premises, we did, we did limit that if the softball games are over, we do not want a takeout type of situation. So we did, we did put that in the lease, but I know Matt worked a lot heavier on this than I did, so. Any questions, I guess, on this, but it does come with a recommendation for approval from the board.
Okay, Matt, do you wanna add anything?
I don't have any specific comments unless there are questions.
Okay, any questions, comments? Councilman Danforth?
Is this a similar lease, do we have a similar lease for Cook Complex, then?
No, this will be the first attempt. They came about eight, nine years ago. The liquor liability and general liability were too expensive to justify. Last year, if you recall, they did do two special permits for the state coed tournaments, but we've never entered in a lease, and there's legalities within the state that since we're, it's a city facility, that there has to be an undersigned lease for the city governing body to approve an outside organization to use that property for malt beverage, since the city is not actually the one, you know, it's not our employees, not our staff actually selling it. So I believe, Matt, I'm correcting the fact that it had to be a lease signed off by the governing body. But this is the first time we've done this.
So will there not be any alcohol sold at Cook Complex?
Short of a special exception, let's say we have the state coed again and they have both facilities, they may come back for a one day or a two day.
Okay, but on a general league standpoint, adult will be out at the new fields, and, okay, and that's why we...
Right, this will be completely on Exhibit A on the back page, but strictly the address of Premier Softball Fields.
Okay, thank you.
I do have one quick question for you, Terry.
Councilman Bueller?
Sorry. If you had mentioned that the adult leagues will play at the new facility, at the premier facility, would there, the only other option for them to play at Cook would be in special tournaments where they need the extra fields? Is that right?
You know, realistically, you know, we're doing a scheduling meeting. There may be other options that the adults still play at Cook. Speaking of Nancy and Bill Conlon, who oversee the league, you know, Friday night coed, that's got to be a huge league. We may need both complexes. The difference is at Premier, it's no outside beverages brought in because we have an established license, um, that's through codified law. Where Cook will do the old school, once the youth are off the fields, they would be able to bring in their own purchased beverage.
Do you think that a lot of folks, if they have the opportunity to take one or the other, they're gonna go to, go to Cook because of the, they can bring their own booze?
Chances are good, I mean, if they, if they, if they had a choice, but, um, you know, and we haven't done that, we're, actually tonight's the, the meeting with our staff to, to break down those complex uses, the different organizations. Our, our goal and hopes is that the adults take Premier as their ownership and we don't utilize Cook short of having a large tournament, an eighty to a hundred team tournament where we simply need it, but yeah, I mean, without going through the process of having their insurance requirements, have two facilities, I don't think financially it makes sense for the a Friday night league or occasional thing to, to have two malt beverage licenses at two different facilities. And, and Nancy Conlin is here, if there's any questions directly to the softball association.
Are the, are the players, are they aware that the, the funds that go from this go back into the programs, do they know that?
Okay, yes, um, we had a meeting three weeks ago and anything that we make out at the league for selling beer or the concession all goes back into our league and into the city, yes. So they're all aware that we told them that they couldn't bring beer into the new complex at all, that it's sold right there, just like a bar.
Any other questions?
Terry, wouldn't it make sense that we have consistency between our, our facilities? It seems odd that we would have this at one and then, albeit maybe not as often or as likely at the other facility, at Cook Complex, to have a different set of rules.
Um, you know, my first reaction is we're, we're trying to label Cook now as a youth facility, um, which within our, you know, it's not ordinance, but within our board policy that we don't allow any alcohol, tobacco in the presence of structured youth programs. You know, no different than Foundation, you know, it's, it's a primarily youth organization where we don't feel alcohol belongs at those complexes. So Premier's kind of an exception that we've labeled the adult, is why we don't see that consistency among, you know, if, if adults roamed amongst all our facilities, absolutely it'd make sense. But with them isolated to really one complex, you know, there, there's really two different sets of rules where we're basically alcohol free at the other ones. And with it being of age, participant level, you know, that's why we're approaching and, and recommending approval, you know, for the softball association, if that makes sense.
Is it, is it possible that after you get done with your scheduling and as we look to the future, that you may have, as that sport continues to be very strong and, and the use of those facilities remains strong, that it might necessitate something to be done there?
Absolutely, I mean, i- if we see that and, you know, our numbers continue to grow and, and Cook, you know, we can put a, a, a second malt beverage license at Cook with, you know, no different than this lease in front of you, there's, there's plenty of parameters in it. You know, we, we hold the key to be able to really restrict.
Do what we want.
You know, and we put in there, you know, within this lease that says, you know, the, the, the first beverage cannot be consumed until any youth are absent from the facility, we could do that at Cook, um, or put a time to say, you know, no alcohol sales till eight P M. So yeah, absolutely, I mean, if we see a growth continually in the adult association and we need Cook for two, three nights a week, you know, we could roll, we could roll this over, just need to re, redo the same process we're in right now.
Okay, thank you.
I might wanna say something, the Premier Fields be run by the association for Lake City. The Cook Complex is now gonna be run by the J O program, so it's two different entities that'll be running it.
Right.
Good point. Any other concerns or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item thirteen is application for a new retail on off sale malt beverage license to Lake City Slow Pitch Softball Association. Doing business as Lake City Slow Pitch Softball Association at fifteen twelve Seventeenth Avenue Southeast. I will open the public hearing and Nancy's here, um, did you wanna add anything?
I just appreciate the opportunity to be able to sell the beer at, um, Premier Fields. Most everybody's excited that we'll have beer there for weekend tournaments when we do run it and league night. And I really believe if I'm selling, I can control the drinking better, if they bring a cooler in, it's pretty free for all, but if they have to come and buy it, I really believe we can control the drinking better and it's better for our umpires than everybody around.
Right, thank you. Councilman Danforth?
Is your controls gonna be purely at the concession building for, for checking ages? Or will there be any monitoring out on the additional fields? Cause I, I do know that it occurs out there, I've seen it out at Cook Complex, where our adult leagues consist of eighteen, nineteen year old kids going up.
Yeah, I can't control that Cook Complex with, because we didn't have a license or anything.
No, I get that, but my point is, is that I could be twenty-one and go buy beer at the concession stand, go back to the dugout and hand it out to my nineteen year old friends.
What we did last year at the two state tournaments, the two special events, anybody that came and bought or anybody they were gonna give a beer to, their friends in the dugout, they all had to have a blue band on, if they didn't have the blue band on, they shouldn't be walking around drinking the beer.
Okay, good, that's, okay, very good.
And everybody had a blue band on.
That works. Councilman Vilhauer?
In conjunction with the tournaments that were out there last year, did you have any issues with people bringing, bringing coolers in, I mean?
No, we, we had people at the gates that stopped that.
Okay.
And the Parking Rec said they would help with that the first few weeks, and then obviously we have policemen that could come out and police it once in a while.
That be the same kind of controls you would have in place there on a regular basis?
Right.
Yeah, and we did meet with Chief McPeak, um, well, actually not with the chief, but we did have conversations the first two, three weeks to expand patrol within that area, just, and he was completely on board, the police department plans on, you know, making a bigger presence in that two to three opening to set, basically to set the tone. And again, it's, it's codified law, now that they have a, a license, you cannot bring alcohol out of the parking lot, no different than a Sparky's, I can't come off the street and bring a beer into their bar, so it falls into that same. We'll have the signage and, you know, I, it was Tracy Shafer that we met with and, but we've got huge support from the police department.
All right, is there anyone else in the room that wants to speak about this? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and look for a motion in second for approval. Who is the motion from, oh, Councilman Danforth and second by Councilman Bueller, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number fourteen is renewal of a retail on off sale malt beverage license to Lake City Slow Pitch Softball Association. Doing business as Lake City Slow Pitch Softball Association at fifteen twelve Seventeenth Avenue Southeast, I'll look for a motion in second for approval.
Shall I move?
Moved by Councilman Albertson. Second by Councilman Y, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Item number fifteen is resolution number eighteen dash eighteen, contingency transfer for the Lake Compeska Comprehensive Plan. I see Roger Foot is here, Roger, would you like to explain what this is for?
Actually Kristen could probably. Actually Kristen could probably do a much better job of that than I, but however, um, last year during budget season, uh, the council approved fifty thousand dollars to be used for the Lake Compeska Master Plan. Well, the scope of that has grown a little bit and we realize that to get the services that we require is gonna take a little more funds than that. So this resolution is to increase the, the budget authority for that project to spend up to eighty thousand dollars, did I say that right?
That sounds good.
Eighty-five, we've got thirty-five thousand would be in the contingency of, from the contingency fund to the Lake Compeska Master Plan and we had the extra five was to cover miscellaneous expenses that we might have above and beyond the contract.
I apologize, I didn't see that page.
Yeah, so the, the budget amount was fifty thousand, the, and the contract that we're, um, coming up on next, I think, is eighty thousand, so we need thirty more for the contract and then an extra five in case we have any expenses related to this project that go above that, so we're not just right on the wire with the contract. So, um, I'll look for a motion in second for approval. Moved by Councilman Vilhauer, second by Councilman Danforth, are there any questions?
I do, Mayor.
Councilman Danforth?
Roger, could you, could you, you said the, the, the reason for the increased cost is the expansion of the, the scope of the work. Could you give us a, us in the public, give us a quick, uh, synopsis of what that scope of work is? What, what are we looking to get from this report?
Sure, this goes back, I wanna say twenty something years. The way that the city and the watershed project and the area interest groups, we've taken a, a shotgun approach to doing any kind of management on Lake Compeska, you know, we come up with a good idea, we pursue that, we, we do one little piece. When we've originally started talking about this, I was mostly concerned with the inlet outlet and the potential for a structure there to help remove some of the sediments that come into the lake, therefore improving water quality overall. But then in discussions with the mayor and, and other interested parties, we realized that we really need to come together and, and pull together a master plan for the entire lake and the surrounding areas to bring the shotgun all into one single plan. We wanna look at zoning, we wanna look at potential redevelopment, we wanna look at existing development and make sure we're not infringing on that. We wanna look at in-lake water quality issues, we wanna look at, we want to bring together a schedule to actually do some dredging that we've been talking about for goodness knows how, goodness knows how many years. So that scope has expanded, it encompasses the original thought, but really if, if we're gonna make this happen, we need a comprehensive look at the entire thing and that's what we've set out to do.
Can I follow up, Mayor, if I can?
Um, and the reason why I ask that, Roger, is, is I was curious, you know, I know we're looking at some of the other ways to utilize the lake recreationally, offer some additional opportunities for the users of the lake, access, et cetera. Um, we, I know we've talked about water quality, I know, it, so part of this issue deals with some type of, of mechanism or mechanisms to control our water upstream before it gets to us, I mean, we've talked about dam or dams in the past. Does any of this deal with that kind of water management? Is it dealing with the high influx of water? Is it, is there anything related to flood protection, call it that, that I haven't heard in, in what your description is here?
No.
Okay.
Can I expand on that a little bit?
Yeah, I'd like you to, because I've, I've been asked that question and, and like to know where we're at and, and Mayor, and I, I think I'd sent you an email the other day, there's been this longstanding study that's supposedly to get done at some point and I, so I, I'd like to understand where that's at in, in conjunction with this.
Even if and when, if and or when, a large structure was to be built upstream. That would have very little effect on the day-to-day water quality in Lake Compeska. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that structure is for large NOAA type events that would, could happen similar to the nineteen ninety-seven. This plan is more on the, the day-to-day living and how we can improve, make our lake more user-friendly, improve some of the amenities that we have, improve some of the accesses and take a look at the, the zoning and planning that has been going on, there's, there's been a lot of pressure for different types of businesses around the lake that we do not have any kind of regulation for. And I'll probably stop here before I dig myself a real hole, Mayor, if you'd like to, uh, expand on that a little bit, I'd appreciate it.
I would love to, I put this in the budget for fifty thousand dollars, not having any idea how much it would cost to pull all of these things we wanna do from the H twenty twenty, um, subcommittees for flood control and water quality and, and amenities around our community, added to flood control, added to the upper big Sioux watershed project objectives. We're ha, seeing demands for resorts at the lake and we don't have the zoning tools in place to address that. We've had requests for expansion of bike trail amenities, we have all these things to happen at the lake that our town wants and we know our town wants it and it, it's a marina, you know, all those things. How do we decide which ones we do and when? And this, the purpose of this report is to put everything into perspective relative to each other and to the big picture so we can get a rough cost estimate of what the various elements would cost and what they would do for us and what they might look like. And so, once we have that document, then we can do budgetary items. We know approximately how much we would have to budget for the various different amenities and throughout the public input part of the project, we'll find out which are the higher priorities for our community. And they're gonna be vastly different in costs, the different construction projects that we would do and activities around the lake, they're gonna be all over the board, but we need to have a document in place to know which ones we should be pursuing first. And, uh, to answer your question about the flood control, that's really has nothing to do with this, that project that we're talking about. Although there are things that the city has to do for flood control, like if we were to do a dam, which the Army Corps of Engineers has recommended, that's another study that has to be completed by the Army Corps of Engineers. That's not to be confused with this, it's a completely separate project. But we would be responsible for acquiring land and that sort of thing, we, we'll touch on that. Uh, we've also heard from the Department of Environment and Natural Resources that we should really think twice about trying to do, um, dredging at Lake Compeska before we have flood control in place, because a flood can bring a massive amount of sediment with it and it can wipe out years of dredging work in one event. So those are things we need to keep in mind. I do think that we'll have a recommendation for selective dredging, where we would do it, what we would do and how much it would cost, how important it is to our community, we're talking about fisheries enhancements, it, it's, there's so many different things. We, we want one document that looks at everything, puts it all in perspective. So we went out for proposals, we got four, we interviewed four different firms, all of them had a price tag higher than fifty thousand dollars. The one that we're recommending is eighty thousand dollars, so we have a fifty thousand dollar budget and an eighty thousand dollar project. So we're asking for a transfer of thirty-five thousand from contingency into the Lake Compeska Master Plan. And I, I think we should add that Roger met with the Lake Compeska Water Project District. And do you wanna talk about that, I wasn't at that meeting, but I believe they acted.
Yes, they did act, um, of course we asked for thirty-five thousand dollars and they approved thirty thousand dollars.
So thirty of the thirty-five would be replenishing, we, and I'm assuming we, we, would we be able to put that money back in contingency? Nope, so anyway, thirty thousand of it could be offset with the Lake Compeska Water Project District contribution to help. And they, they wanna be a partner in this effort and then the five thousand would still be there, so we have the budget authority to do this.
Well, Mayor, I think it, what we're doing here is, is long overdue, there's no question in my mind. And I just wanted to make sure as the public is hearing that we're talking about a Lake Compesta Ma, Compeska Master Plan, what it does involve and what it doesn't involve, because, you know, this year with the influx of water in there, albeit not, I wouldn't call it a flood, just a normal runoff into their.
It wasn't a minor flood, you can call it a flood.
It was, there was a lot of water, but it, it's certainly what, what we haven't seen in the past as far as that goes. But so the question of flood control, where are we at, has come up again and, and, um, that's why I wanted to make sure that we clarify that for the public, what this does and doesn't contain for our scope of work. And then, Mayor, I'll ask you the question of, it, it seems to me, and maybe another councilman. council member can help me out here, but it seems to me at one point there was going to be a study done on flood control, another study, and then I think that got defunded or something?
No, the, the, before we can do a flood control project, we need a feasibility study completed. A feasibility study was started by the Army Corps of Engineers, they are the only ones that can do this feasibility study. Now, we, the city, in conjunction with the Lake Compeska Water Project District, about fifteen or twenty years ago, got tired of waiting for the Corps and hired a consultant to help us design flood control on our own, and we were shut down. We, we cannot do this without the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. As a federal agency, they need to be funded by Congress. Congress needs to set that money aside and say, finish this report. And so, that is ongoing, we are still waiting for Congress to, to fund it, and, but the, the study is partially done, the city has partnered with the Corps of Engineers to complete the study, we're just waiting for funding. Councilman Billhauer?
And as a follow-up to that, Kristin, we, we have budgeted, we have been budgeting dollars for our estimated cost, share of that study, have we not?
It's not in the budget.
It's not in the budget.
No, because we'll be reimbursing the Corps if they expend the funds, we will know long in advance, plenty of time to budget.
But, but I know we have discussed this so before at budget, at budget time, so, okay, I, I must be mistaken on that, but-
It's not in the 2018 budget, it, it may be in a long-term somewhere.
I think we, we did have discussions in that regard, we, I know there was a second half to the amount of money that we were looking at, and I think we did have discussions in that regard, I, I don't know that it was in the budget, but we talked, we approved it. I think we all kind of gave the okey-dokey that we would fund that second half when we needed to. I, I, can I, Mayor, can I ask one other question?
Sure.
Roger, is, does part of your scope of work, does that include any phosphorus mitigation issues at all?
You, you know that that subject is near and dear to my heart. In the scope of dredging and sediment removals, yes. As part of an industrial-sized phosphorus removal facility, we may touch on it, we may study it a little bit, but it's not going to go towards construction of that facility.
None of this money will go toward design of any particular one of the things in it, it's a planning, planning-level tool.
And I, and I got to agree with Mike, you know, if there's an item is itemized, and maybe there is, and I haven't seen it, but if you had an itemized list of what your scope of work is, that'd be kind of nice to see, it would clarify for a lot of folks, me, including myself.
Councilman Danforth?
And I, I don't want to get onto this long topic of, of the dams and such, but does it do us any good to, to contact our, our federal representatives or U.S. senators and, and representatives and, and push for, you know, at least a voice again back to get that study picked up and ran with, or-
Certainly can't hurt, it certainly can't hurt.
I mean, we, we might as well, I mean, after all, you know, President Trump wants to drain the swamp, maybe that'd be a good time for us to dredge or something, but-
I'll have to object for wetland purposes.
Well, that just kind of goes hand in hand, maybe he'd go with us, but maybe we need to make an official request for-
Well, you did, actually.
And be more persistent.
And a couple of council meetings ago, you authorized, or we, actually, I sent the letter and I presented it to you, reiterating that the city is moving forward and still remains committed to being the partner with the Corps should they move forward with this project. And since that time, the Corps of Engineers has requested a meeting with the congressional representatives here in Watertown, and we're going to have that next week. Yes, so I'm not sure if it's the aides or if the actual Congress reps will come, but we will be having a tour of the Mahoney Creek Dam site, and we'll be discussing the history of the project, because this has taken so long that the people at the Corps are, they've changed hands, there's new people, and they, they aren't familiar with the history. Fortunately, I'm familiar with the history, because I've been involved since nineteen ninety-seven with the Lake Compeska Water Project District and with the city in flood control efforts. And so, just an update, there's nothing else happening other than an update at this point, and we, we can't do anything until that report's finished, so that's our first priority, get that report finished. But again, that doesn't have anything to do with, with this item.
Again, it's the topic of our lake-
Yes.
And they, they go hand in hand, because some of the things we want to do don't make sense unless we have a solution upriver. So, anyway, thank you, that's a good update, and I think that's going to help the public understand this, so.
Anyone else? I think I have a motion in second already. Yeah, okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number sixteen is authorization for the mayor to sign an agreement for engineering services with Confluence in the amount of eighty thousand dollars for the Lake Compeska Master Plan. I'll look for a motion in second. Moved by Councilman Bueller, second by Councilman Y. Discussion, anything else you want to add, Roger?
Um, in the selection of the engineering firm, I'd like to note that we put together a committee, our first kickoff meeting, we had over thirty people that were very passionate and wanted to be very much involved with this whole process. We had to pare that down to a selection committee of about a dozen, and I want to say that we've included, you know, everyone from the engineering department to planning and zoning, to local business people, H-2020 people, the mayor's office, I know I'm-
Fisheries?
Fisheries, yes, was definitely a big one.
Isaac Walton League.
Isaac Walton League. We tried to cover our bases with all the interest groups that have a stake in this game, and we came together, we met and interviewed four different firms about an hour each. Of course, if you followed the link in your information tonight, should, should have taken you to each of the proposals. After, I think the, the committee was very clear on the one that they wanted to go with. There may have been reservations on, on a couple of fronts, but I believe that the selection that we would like to make this evening is probably the best decision that we could possibly make. They had all their items lined up, everybody was extremely happy with them, and I would, I'd like to suggest that we go with the Confluence proposal, even though it's, it's not the cheapest, yet it's not the most expensive. In that proposal, they do, do go through a work plan, which specifically lists out every single topic that they're going to look at. Phase one, research analysis, public input, and that's going to be a three-month process. Phase two is drafting the master plan to cover future land use, fish habitat, public amenities, all the stuff that we've asked for is, is well documented, what they're going to do. And then phase three, finalize, finalizing the plan. They have a nine-month timeline on this, so the sooner we can get them started, the sooner we can complete. And we do plan on extensive public input. We always need to give the public a chance to voice their opinions and concerns in regards to a project of this size. I don't know if I can add anything else to that, I'd be more than happy to answer any additional questions.
Councilman Billhauer?
Probably worth noting, Public Works Committee did discuss this last week and recommend approval of this.
Thank you. And the, the firm, Confluence, completed the downtown Sioux Falls Riverfront Master Plan about ten or twelve years ago, which was similar to what we're doing on Lake Compeska, and they had a list of projects that they've been picking away at out of that master plan, and it's transforming downtown Sioux Falls, it really is. And they also completed another master plan for the Mississippi River Shore in Saint Cloud, Minnesota, which that project is done, but they haven't started any of the work yet. So, they had experience doing this sort of work in other locations successfully. Did I get a motion already? Okay. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Roger. Item number seventeen is consideration of change order number two to the contract with Reedy Construction for the Watertown Regional Airport Runway twelve dash thirty reconstruction project, increasing the contract six thousand eight hundred eighty-six dollars seventy-two cents for a total contract price of eight million two hundred sixteen thousand five hundred seventy-eight dollars twenty-five cents. I will look for a motion in second for approval of the change order. Moved by Councilman Danforth. Second by Councilman Billhauer, and we have Mike Schmidt here to tell us a little more about this.
Good evening, it's nice to have a council meeting while it's still light out. Um, if you remember last fall, we were in front of you guys with the change order to add in some electrical items for the lighting system out there. Probably midway through the reconstruction project, there was a catastrophic failure with your airport lighting system, the computer control system that allows the airport employees to run diagnostics, see which lights are working, which ones aren't, do a lot of different things with it, along with the radio controller, so pilots were able to key the lights up when they're on final or coming in at night, which basically caused the city or the airport to run their lighting system on manual all through, from dusk to dawn, so, a lot of a, probably, probably saw a lot of increased costs and utilities for the airport last summer with that. We did do a change order last fall to essentially replace that system, it wasn't part of the project, but the FAA did allow it, so, which is always nice when it's a five percent match versus a hundred percent match. When they got to installing the computer system, it was found that there's two DigiTrack boards, which are an interface in between your computers and the actual runway lighting system in the vault, the, the regulators and everything. Those were found to be faulty, that weren't found on the initial troubleshooting through Kraus-Hines. So, that was something that we needed to, if we didn't install those, your system still wouldn't be working today, so, that's the one item, the reels. We did replace boards in there, however, once they got the boards in and got everything programmed, it was found that the trigger wires, there are slave cables in between them that had some nicks in it and everything like that, so those wires had to be replaced. And then, the rest is just some additional spare parts for runway lights. A few got dinged here and there, they're fixed, but Todd's spare parts stock is running out with things that got damaged out there, so, the nice thing with this is contractors typically get one price and airport operations people get a different price, so, these are actually cheaper than what Todd can get them for through the supplier, so, getting them incorporated into the project where it's a five percent match makes it very appealing when you have to look at paying a hundred percent otherwise, so. Those are the items, we just, this should be everything up to date, everything's completed, we'll be working with Kristin here in the next few weeks to get this thing closed out. We're still well within the project budget from the initial bid, so, I'm here to answer any questions.
Excellent, thank you. Any questions for Mike? See none, I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Item number eighteen is budget transfer approval, Park and Rec Projects, two thousand eighteen, and, um, look for a motion in second for approval, and then we'll talk about this. Moved by Councilman Billhauer, second by Councilman Albertson. Oh, sorry, Councilman Bueller made the motion. I should look when I... Kristin, do you want to explain about the budget transfer, or do you want to have Jay?
Do you want me to start, Jay, or do you want to?
You can go ahead if you wish.
Okay, so, this is kind of a, a pre-item that needs to happen before nineteen and twenty can take place. The two bids that you'll approve next came in over budget, so Jay and I sat down and had the conversation about what do we do? The option is a contingency transfer, but Jay had made mention that the camping cabin budget of twenty-four thousand, he no longer thought was needed because they're going to be working through a few things of what they actually do with that. According to our Home Rule Charter, we do have the option to, within a department, transfer budgets to different line items through council approval. So, what you see before you tonight is to, to take away the camping cabin budget and to allocate it between the zoo shop and the cemetery road improvements. And then I'll let Jay kind of speak further.
Yes, in regards to the camping cabin, as we as a staff discuss that project, we think it's best that we hesitate on that project until the time we can do a master plan for City Park. You know, where is the proper location for that camping cabin? Do we want additional campsites? Are we going to remove a picnic shelter? And so, we, prior to this, we had discussed that we weren't intending to do the camping cabin project, because we want to wait and do it right the first time, we don't want to run roads and electrical to a site that probably isn't going to be the best option in the future.
Thank you. All right, any questions? Councilman Danforth?
Jay, was this, because we've talked two different things, we've talked about the remodel of the, the house that's out there, and we've also talked about separate standalone camp cabins like out on Lake Pelican, right? Which, which are you referring to here?
This would be like the cabins at Pelican Lake.
Okay, the standalone ones?
Yeah.
Okay.
Other questions? See none, I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item nineteen is award of contract for Park and Rec Improvements Project number eighteen nineteen in the amount of one hundred seventy-two thousand sixty-six dollars twenty-five cents to Dunick, Inc. I'll look for a motion in second, then we'll discuss it. Moved by Councilman Solomon, second by Councilman Roby. All right, Jay, do you want to talk about it?
Well, this project worked very closely with Shane and the engineering department on this, and that actually, it's one project, but it includes three individual projects within. The first project is for the recreational trail along Twenty-Fourth Street West. We have had for several years, ever since the reconstruction, the Third Avenue project, we have had a void in the trail from Third Avenue to Kemp Avenue. This project would allow us to tie in that trail together, and then also, that's a bad-stretched trail all the way to Fourth Avenue, so, then also being remobilized anyway, we would go ahead and complete the remainder of that trail section. The second project is the, the reconstruction and overlay of the North Camping Loop at City Park, and this would involve what we initially talked about, was there's a real bad section on the east side of the North Campground Loop. And as we were discussing this project, you know, Shane suggested that we, you know, not only complete that reconstruction, but being we're out there, let's go ahead and do an overlay for the remainder of that loop, so it's all consistent. And so, that's why this project ran over slightly on budget, but it does complete the, the entire camping loop. And the third item is the reconstruction of a portion of the cemetery road system, and that we actually, through Shane's advice, increased the scope a little bit, too. We actually were just looking to do one of the loops as we try and upgrade the roads out at Mount Hope Cemetery, but Shane suggested while we're doing that, we might as well look at doing the crossroads within that loop, too, so, that this bid would, would include all of that.
The unit prices were excellent.
Yes.
And that's the basis for wanting to do more work now when we have a really good price, right?
Craig, the extra work really was intended to be within the scope, but, or, within our price range and budget for Jay's project, but they just barely missed the mark, so, they're necessary projects, it just slightly overrun in what we expected.
And all of these were recommended by the park board?
Yes, yes.
All right, any questions? Comments? Councilman Billhauer?
I, I think you may have said it, Jay, but the, the, the bike trail from Fourth Avenue to Third Avenue, the, the section that's already there from Fourth Avenue to Kemp, that's actually going to be, have to be redone, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, okay. I, I'm just glad to see we're moving forward in that, because I know that's a safety factor out there. I'm just glad to see we're moving forward next, I know that's a safety factor out there. I've had comments addressed to me that, you know, to that extent. And then it's not part of what we're acting on here, but just a comment, what's the plans for, you go on the west entrance on Jackson Park, that road has broken up terribly this spring. What's the plans out there?
Well, we're beginning the CAP project next week, and that will definitely be part of the plan, and also visited with Rob Bannon this morning about that because it really did, I was in there last week, and it did really break up that upper parking section up there, so we need to do some work over there.
Any other? Councilman Y?
Jay, on 21st Street there, where the bike path runs, this weekend I noticed that there was a driveway with a culvert over the bike path. Is that permanent? Is that bike path going to be moved? Are you familiar with that?
I'm going to let Shane answer that question, but I think it is going to be permanent.
Yeah, that driveway has been annually installed and removed subsequently due to overflow traffic needs during the farm show and other large events at the extension. We finally made that decision to make that permanent, and the bike trail will come across that driveway entrance as well, but that's my understanding is that the street department has now made that a permanent provision and not to be removed.
Other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item 20 is award of contract for the zoo shop in the amount of $195,842.00 to Lakeside Construction. Look for a motion and second. Moved by Councilman Vilhauer, second by Councilman Y. Any discussion? Jay, you want to explain what this is?
Well, this is a very much anticipated project for our zoo staff. Presently, we don't have any shop facilities or any construction area for our maintenance staff to do any projects. But right now, the welder is set up in a cold storage building, so it's really difficult to work on projects throughout the zoo whether it is fixing cages or what it may be without a good area to do that. So this project has been in the budget before, and we were told at that time that reduce the cost and come up with more economic plans. So Dan and his staff over there have worked very hard on this, and we are over budget on the project, but it does meet all the needs of the project. And actually, the project was a 50/50 project between Lake Area Zoological Society and the city, and the, will not change the budgeted amount for the city. The Lake Area Zoological Society Board has stepped up. They initially committed $100,000, up to $100,000 on this project, and being we had the overruns, they have agreed to fund the remaining part of it, too. So we, as far as what the 50% that the city budgeted, will remain the same.
Okay, and this was recommended by the park board?
Yes, and by the Lake Area Zoological Society Board.
Yes, Councilman Vilhauer?
Jay, have you had the conversation just recently with Dan or with the zoo society as far as they're still on board with the full $100,000 commitment? I know that was their plans a couple of years, but then it got pushed back a little bit further again, and then a year ago, they approved the 50/50 split based upon the $180,000 or whatever. So they're still on board for the $100,000 then? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, I've spoke with Dan and also Will Morlack, President of the Society.
Other questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number 21 is award of contract for airport terminal parking lot improvements in the amount of $81,669.83 to Boas Construction, Inc. Now look for a motion and second for approval. Moved by Councilman Thorson, second by Councilman Vilhauer, and I see Mike Schmidt from Helms is back at the podium to tell us about this.
You bet. On April 6th, we opened bids for your terminal parking lot improvements project. We received four bids, two each for asphalt and two for concrete. Looking at the pricing for concrete, it's about double what the asphalt costs are, and you know, we wanted to do that, for one, it brings out the best pricing in both, but if we could make it work in a life cycle cost analysis to where the maintenance over the life of that pavement, it would make sense to go concrete. Problem is, is twice the cost on the smaller area and minimum maintenance requirements doesn't really pencil out to go with concrete, which is why our recommendation is to go for asphalt. Really good numbers, Boas Construction came in at $81,669.83, and Dunick came in at $84,839. So there's only about a $3,200 difference there, so very good pricing, very competitive pricing between the two. Worked a lot with Boas Construction over the years, very reputable company. Other than that, here to answer any questions that you might have. The only thing I don't get to report on this one is this is not an AIP project, so this is 100% city cost, so it's always nice when you're only paying 5% of it, but it's a good problem to have. You guys are really growing your passenger numbers out at the airport. When your main parking lot is full and you have to go to the north to expand it, that's a good problem to have, and the city's put a lot of forces into it, building it up to where it is already, so just making this a hard surface to make it a little more user-friendly in the fall and the spring when things get a little wet out there, so.
No, we don't have that money yet. Any questions? Councilman Vilhauer?
I want to make sure, are we redoing the current parking section plus the expansion to the north, or is it just the expansion to the north?
Just the expansion to the north.
Okay.
Yep.
It gets used a lot. Any other questions or comments? See none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Item number 22 is authorization for the mayor to sign an addendum to the property purchase and development agreement 2018 with the Watertown Development Company. I'll look for a motion and second for approval. Moved by Councilman Albertson, second by Councilman Bueller. And I see Chris Schilkin, the director of the Watertown Development Company, is here, and the agreement is being scrolled, and Shane, if you could bring this location up on the GIS to show where we're talking about, that would be helpful. So if you want to circle the lot, that's property that the city purchased years ago, and it remains unplanned and unplatted and undeveloped. And then recently, the city and Watertown Development Company purchased the land for the industrial park, which is near it. These two parcels do not touch, but they're in close proximity to one another and separated by a pipeline with an easement over the top of it that wasn't purchased. So the agreement that we just struck with Watertown Development Company to share the costs of purchasing the land and developing the industrial park did not include that previously purchased parcel. There's some new faces involved in this. We believe that the intention was that that be done together, planned out together and developed together, and so we're modifying the agreement to cover, to include that little piece for the whole industrial park planning, and then we would utilize the services of Watertown Development Company to market that. So are there any questions for Chris or me? You want to add anything to that, Chris?
That sounded great.
It's nice that you come to all our meetings, I appreciate that. In case I have a moment. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Item number 23 is first reading of ordinance number 18-04, amending zoning district boundaries by rezoning a portion of Outlets 6, of Outlets 4, 5, and 6 in the southwest quarter of Section 33, 117, 52. The label on the agenda was a little bit off, and I, the way I read it is how it should have read. But I'll look, this is just, no action, it's just a first reading, but Shane, would you like to describe what this is?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. If you'd put my screen up on the board. The area that is hatched is the area being rezoned. The future plan is to also plat this area. The rezone is downgrading from R3, which was, remainder of Outlet 6 was R3, this portion, and this portion will remain R3. Previously, the same developer rezoned this section to R1, so in consistency, they're also rezoning this to R1, or requesting that to be rezoned to R1 so that they can build single resident houses along this segment of road. Any questions?
And this was recommended by the plan commission?
Yes, correct.
Just a first reading. Any questions? All right, moving on. Item number 24 is replat of Block 5 of Valley View First Edition, Resolution Number 18-17. Look for a motion and second for approval. Moved by Councilman Danforth, second by Councilman Y. Shane, would you explain this one, please?
Yes, this is a replat of actually a recent subdivision. We, last summer, subdivided Valley View Edition, and then subsequently, the developer decided to, or got interest in re-subdividing this block of the project. It was, is proposed to re-divide this into nine lots as shown here. There is a private drive that is proposed to go between lots 4 through 9. The only lot that doesn't have access to an outer street of the addition is Lot 5, but it will have access through the private drive. There will also be water and sewer utilities that come down through this private drive easement section, and we do have development agreements and access maintenance agreement that will come forward here as well following this action. So any questions?
This was recommended by the plan commission.
Correct.
It's been through that. Councilman Danforth?
Shane, what's the zoning on, is this all going to be zoned what?
It recently was rezoned R2.
So it's R2, the whole thing?
Yep.
And it was R3, right?
Correct.
So it's downzoned.
And so what's that middle lot, 5?
Yes.
So we're good with that type of access?
Yes, we have this in other locations in the community. It will have, we have private drive standards, and that's what they're, they're going to meet those city standards for private drive, yeah. They'll have their garbage and mail collection on the public street, not on the private drive.
Any other questions or comments? Councilman Vilhauer?
So we have no responsibility currently or in the future for maintenance, snow removal, et cetera, on that private drive, then?
That's correct.
I mean, suppose 30, 40 years down the road, or whatever the life expectancy is for, let's say that private drive really gets to be in sad shape for whatever reason, and again, we have, we have no responsibility, I mean, that's up to the homeowners?
Right, there's a document that we've created, you're going to take action on it here shortly, that sets up a maintenance agreement that the homeowners association and the people involved with these lots need to, are committing to upkeep that into forever.
Our subdivision ordinance allows for private roads as long as they have that responsibility recorded at the courthouse in a document that describes that the city is not responsible and that somebody is responsible for snow removal and maintenance of the private drive. Any other, Councilman Y?
Does a private drive have to have curb and gutter?
We, no. And I, have you seen the design of it?
I have not seen the design yet. It has, our city standard is a 28-foot hard-surfaced road that can be either concrete or asphalt.
And it's possible they would put curb and gutter in it? It's not necessarily a requirement on a private road. Other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number 25 is authorization for the mayor to sign a development agreement with J&amp;J Land Sales LLC for the replat of Block 5 of Valley View First Edition. This is the development agreement that goes with the plat. Look for a motion and second. Moved by Councilman Bueller, second by Councilman Albertson. Shane, you want to tell us about this?
Yeah, there's not really much to add. This does outline the improvements, both privately and publicly, that are intended to do, to be involved with this plat. It does state in there, as I previously mentioned, that the public services such as mail delivery and garbage collection will be on the public street, not on the private street. We do also identify that these six lots, 4 through 9, will have addresses off of the private drive, but we're also stating that the private drive is going to be named Fifth Street West, or, you know, so that's consistent addressing with the remainder of the street to the north. And it does lay out the installation of a public sanitary sewer service through there and private water services.
Okay, so the development agreement, does it refer to the development agreement for the outside roads, which is already recorded, right?
Correct. That, those, that development agreement stays intact.
Okay, so this one basically talks about the private road?
Correct. Yep.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number 26 is authorization for the mayor to sign an agreement for construction and maintenance of a private road and other miscellaneous plat conditions with J&amp;J Land Sales LLC for the replat of Block 5 of Valley View First Edition. Look for a motion and second. Moved by Councilman Vilhauer, second by Councilman Roby. Shane, what are, what are the various conditions covered by this?
Okay, I'll see.
The maintenance, of course, snow removal.
Right, right. So the developers' obligations are to agree that their heirs or successors are tied to this maintenance agreement going forward. On behalf of their successor titles, Lot 4 through 9, they are responsible for all maintenance, including but not limited to snow removal, pavement repair and replacement, grass mowing, and weed control, and that the city has no responsible for that maintenance. Developers also agree on their behalf and their successors that the area included, including the paved roadway in a state of comparable that of grant drive upon completion or is maybe maintained in the future, so that we kind of established what the standards would be so that, you know, we don't want to have them repave it for a single pothole, but certainly if the roadway, it falls into disrepair, we want it to be comparable to the public roads that we maintain around it. So that really sets the standard for the agreement.
Talks about mail delivery, I see that in there.
Yep, yep, I mentioned that before.
That's where it's covered, is in this private road agreement. Any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Okay, item number 27 is consideration of change order number two to the contract with PKG Contracting, Inc. for the wastewater treatment facility Digest or Rehabilitation Project Number 1612, increasing the contract $33,553.78 for a total contract price of $1,184,289.62. Look for a motion and second for approval. Moved by Councilman Danforth, second by Councilman Roby. All right, see Mike Berger's here to tell us about this?
Yeah, in addition to increasing the contract price, this change order added seven days to contract time, so that the date of substantial completion was revised from October 7th, 2017 to October 14th, 2017. This change order does come with the approval of the May 2nd, 2018 Public Works Committee. This change order does come with the approval of the May 2, 2018 Public Works Committee. That approval was based upon the recommendation of H.R. Green's engineering review of the contractor's request. And I can summarize that for you, if you'd like me to carry on. What the contractor did is they requested more labor and materials because they found out the existing fixed cover had a internal coating thickness that was abnormally thick, which required more time and materials. So, H.R. Green looked back at the original specifications when this digester was coated, and it called for a standard thickness, but what they encountered was, in some cases, multiple times thicker than what was anticipated to be there. So, that resulted in extra work. In addition to coating thickness, there was more time and material required to remove mill scale. Mill scale is required to be removed to have a sufficient steel bonding surface for the new coating to adhere to. And typically, when steel is prepped for coating, mill scale is removed. In this case, it was not. Again, back in the original specification, which was much more than 20 years ago, that specification had required that the mill scale be removed at that time, but they encountered it. It was not removed, and H.R. Green noted these two conditions in their reports. And so, with that, they recommended that we approve this change order due to the additional work required.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Mike? You answered them all. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries.
Mayor? Looks like Representative from Ringo's is here.
Okay. So, we will be returning to item number 5, which was malt beverage on-off sale license renewal for BMG, Inc., doing business as Ringo's at 520 10th Street Northwest for the period of July 1, 2018 to June 30, 2019. And we've already held the public hearing, so I don't think I need to open that again, but you're, I take it you're the owner?
Yes.
So, he's here, in case you have any questions for him. And before we do that, I'll look for a motion and second for approval. Moved by Councilman Vilehauer, second by Councilman Thorson. Okay, now we have discussion and questions, so. Could you please state your name?
Brad Maynard.
Thank you. Anybody have questions for Brad? Now is your chance. Is this an after-hours violation?
Yeah.
Brad, can you explain, over here, if you, I'd like to know what occurred, why it occurred, and what's being done to resolve that or correct that in the future?
So, on February 15 of 2018, we had an employee charged, the actual charge was serving or allowing alcohol to be consumed after legal hours. My employee did not and does not serve alcohol after the hours. My employee did allow consumption after hours. So, we didn't serve anybody, but somebody was, still had a beverage.
What time was it? Was the citation?
I don't have the actual time. It was right after 2:00. The door was still, he hadn't locked the door yet.
Do we have an officer here, Remmers? Would you like to come forward?
Can you answer that question, I guess? Ryan Remmers is a Watertown Police Department. I'm just reading through the report as, and it looked like it was 2:27 a.m. is when we got a call to go there. One of our officers responded to Ringo's, based on a complaint.
Okay. Thank you.
So, I was in contact with Watertown PD, and basically, they said no one was served after hours, but they saw consumption after hours. My, with visiting with my employee, he said he was vacuuming and didn't realize that the people had a beverage left. The solution for it is, well, before I go there, we all, all of my employees are TAM certified. They've taken the, it's a techniques of alcohol management certification. We've been open for four years. We've never failed a sting. This is our first violation. Solution to it, no one's allowed inside the building after 2 o'clock.
That would work.
Kind of simple.
Any other questions? Councilman Vilehauer?
Can I ask, what prompted the complaint? I mean, what?
I don't know. I guess I was, what I was told by the PD is that there was people in our building after legal hours. So, they came down to investigate.
Okay. Any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is old business. Is there any old business?
Mayor, can I?
Councilman Danforth?
What is the status, maybe that answers the question for you or Shane, but what is the status of the, the access coming off of 26th? Is that correct? Going into where Trav's is at?
Yes.
Is that whole thing a done deal now and is going to proceed, or is that?
The agreements are executed. It's now in their hands, the property owner's hands. And the DOT has issued the permit for work in the state highway right-of-way. And Shane, have you, you got approved drawings, right?
Yes.
So, it's, it's up to the contractor. We're not involved at this point.
So, it's, from our standpoint, we're done and we've moved on, and it's up to them?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
We will inspect the work. It'll be our road when, and, you know, if it, when it meets the city's standards for approval, then it will become our road. We'll formally accept it. Any other old business? Councilman Robey?
Can you just get a quick update on Cherry Creek Drive?
That's a, you mean the drainage project that's in the budget? That has, the project remains as a 2018 project, and don't believe it's been assigned to anyone. And now with Shane's resignation, we may farm that out to a private consultant, so that the work's done. There's money to do the work. Any other old business? Is there any new business? Item 29. Councilman Y?
Mayor, it appears that Uber has made a presence in Watertown, the ride-sharing service?
Lyft?
Or Lyft, I'm sorry, yeah. Lyft. Lyft, Uber, both same but different. What's the status on that, as far as our ordinance is? Are they allowed, are they not? I've had some calls about that.
I think I will let the city attorney answer that question.
Well, I advise the police department that it's my opinion currently that our ordinance, although it says taxi and motor bus for hire, when it was enacted, it was contemplating a service that would accept money in exchange for a ride. Therefore, in my opinion currently, those types of services would be considered a taxi that would have to go through the licensing process that we have in our ordinances. So, that being said, it sounds like, I've not heard negative things from anybody about, you know, that coming into town. I am sure the cab company would disagree with that. But if that's something that we want to pursue, I would just need some direction, and we could get an ordinance drafted and/or fix the current ordinance to specifically exclude transportation network companies. But either way, we'll, we'll need to make some changes to our ordinances to allow for them. The company, the Regulatory Compliance Gal I talked to at the company, their opinion is they are not taxi services, which I think that they are technically not, probably, but I believe that our ordinance was passed with a more broader intention. I could probably be convinced, you know, there's an argument to be, to be had on either side, I would say. But regardless, we'll want to do something in short order if, if it's the consensus we want to allow for them to operate in Watertown, and, and impose certain regulations on them if we want to do that, so.
Councilman, who said? Councilman Robey?
Lyft is in Sioux Falls. They had a short run in Mitchell, is my understanding. What did, how did they handle that with their ordinances, do you know?
Well, I know that Sioux Falls, and I, I'm still, it's on my list of things to do, to contact the city attorney or the city attorney's office in Sioux Falls and Mitchell, to talk to them about that. I know that they, Sioux Falls specifically, had a whole new scheme that they enacted into their ordinances to allow for transportation network companies. And so, but according to Lyft, they started operating well before that in Sioux Falls, so.
Reactionary.
Right.
Councilman Danforth?
Matt, do we work with the individual people here that are conducting business under the Lyft guys, or are we working with Lyft, the corporate? If we were to, let's say we were to say that we're going to fine them, we disagree with them. Who gets fined? The, the person that's doing the job here or at the corporate level?
Oh, excuse me. I suppose the, currently, if the police department were to issue a citation, it would be on the individual drivers that were operating a taxi cab without a license. Now, on the broader level, these are being called transportation network companies is the, is the phraseology that they've been labeled as. The state does have statutory scheme that regulates what they have to do to comply with certain insurance requirements of the state. But yeah, I believe right now, if, if a citation would be issued for operating without a license, it would be on an individual driver.
Councilman Y?
Is, is there a fee associated with being, operating without a license in city ordinance?
Yeah, it's similar to most of the punishment, punishment provisions in our ordinance. It's a misdemeanor. It's basically equivalent of a misdemeanor, punishable by $200 a day, I believe, potentially. That's a, that's a maximum, $200 a day or 30 days in jail.
Are we going to start working on this, then, or put something together, do you think?
I think so, and I know Matt's doing some research and...
So, you know, we've talked about this a few times, about issues that have come up on, on who's kind of responsible for pushing things forward. And so, you know, the mayor can put anything on the agenda, but so can two council members. So, if two council members come to me and say, hey, put together something we can put on the agenda, I'll get to work on it.
I'll put it on, so whenever you're ready. I mean, I don't want to do it before we're...
I would suggest that we have a small committee that kind of talks about the, there's a couple different directions we could take. We could modify the current taxi cab ordinance to specifically exclude transportation network companies, and/or we could provide a new scheme to regulate transportation network companies in addition to excluding them from the taxi cab ordinance. So, there's a couple different directions, and I think it'd be appropriate to maybe have a small group to discuss how, how we want to approach that.
Okay, thank you. Any of the council members who would like to serve on this committee, please let me know. Is there any other new business? Are there any liaison member reports?
Mayor?
Councilman Albertson?
I went to this city library meeting last week, and some of you saw in the paper that it was reported, very well done by Dan, that there is a problem with the heating at the library. One unit is completely dis, has been disassembled now because of not working at all, and the other one looks very similar to the one that's not assembled anymore. So, I would think that it would behoove us maybe to even look at doing something about that now rather than waiting until later on. And I doubt that DeeDee has had time maybe to get a bid as to what it would cost for heating and, you know, or get a quote, just to have a general idea. But I think our board there suggested that she would look into that very quickly because, you know, the fall can start in a hurry. And I think sometimes you just have to be ready for it, and that's definitely a major problem. So, it's just kind of a report to you that hopefully, within maybe even two weeks, we can come in with an approximate, so we know what we're talking about, to fix that heating system, because it's not working now, and is on limp, it's limping now, maybe is a better word.
Right. And I know the library was cold a lot this last winter. We need to resolve this. Thank you. Any other liaison reports? Item 31 is executive session pursuant to South Dakota Codified Law 1-25-2. We will have an executive session this evening in order to discuss and consult with legal counsel on contractual matters, and there is a chance that we will take some action when we come out. So, I'd look for a motion and second to go into executive session. A motion by Councilman Bueller, second by Councilman Solom. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. We are in executive session, so.